This meeting shall come to order. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, united, invincible, with liberty and justice for all. I have a quick reminder about public comment, and I do believe we have Dr. Bronlin. I think you have something you'd like to say this evening. Stacy. While he's getting up, I have to say a huge welcome to all you parents and kids. And I know I speak for everybody else at the board. We are so excited to have you all here and to have children here, which is the best.
On the paper, whether it's a matter of finances and the school wants more money, I've never heard whether the school system says they have just the right amount of students. It'd be interesting if they could say that this is the ideal students to have. Some people say part of their problem is they don't get state money. When I was in school at this stage, we didn't get state money, to my knowledge. It wasn't necessary, so maybe reducing expenses. But if you want to get money, and notice that a lot of foundations seem to be finding trouble giving money away. Some of the organizations, like the Lilly Foundation, a year ago, they gave a million dollars to the Fort Wayne Urban League. There's the Follinger Foundation, Dodd-Wood Foundation. And a lot of these foundations say they don't have people who want money. So why don't, may I make a suggestion? Why don't you simply explain to them and reduce expenses? I think that'd solve your problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bronlin. We appreciate it. All right, we're going to move on to communications from Dr. St. John.
Thank you, Mrs. Mopert. Again, welcome, everybody. It's just an exciting night, an opportunity to recognize real high achievement from some of our elementary students. It's one of the, I think, the best board meetings of the cycle. So welcome here to Homestead High School. And yeah, Mrs. Mopert, we have some news to share here through communications. The following Homestead media students won top honors recently after being named finalists in the 24-25 National John Drury High School Radio Awards Competition. Carter Schwartz, a 12th grader, third place for Best Station Promo. Braxton Hall, Atticus Dean, and Malachi Stout, first place for Best Sports Play-by-Play. Dax Thacker, first place for Best Radio Drama, and third place for Best DJ. Alana Baker, Grace Dickmeyer, and Caroline Burns, second place for Best Podcast, and first place for Best Talk Show. Great job Spartans. Kudos to Mr. Schenkel, Mr. Dunn, for helping guide these students. And those awards for our media program here at Homestead just continue to roll in. More celebration out of Homestead. Spartan Joe Green, freshman, won the Indiana High School Athletic Association State Finals in Boys Tennis. Won 6-2, 6-1 to advance to the championship match, actually to win the championship match. And fun fact, Joe was the first freshman to win the IHSSAA Boys Single State Championship in the history of Indiana. So major accomplishment for Joe. More out of Homestead. Twenty junior and senior members of student government attended the Rotary Club of Fort Wayne's Annual World Affairs Conference last week. The conference, Become an Influence: Teens Against Vaping, was held at PFW. Students learned about the chemistry and pharmacology of vaping, how it affects the adolescent brain, and the truth behind marketing and manipulation targeting teens. Variety of guest speakers, and we wanted to showcase that group here and student government engaging with Rotary. Spartan Junior Frank Kai was named the winner of Grow Allen's Ready, Set, Grow Logo Design Contest. This was a countywide competition inviting students to create a logo for Grow Allen's Early Learning Initiative. And Frank earned $500 and a day of mentorship at a local design firm. Frank's creativity and design skill will help shape Grow Allen's visual identity as they continue inspiring students from pre-K through 12 across Allen County. And here's a teacher highlighting an award. The Saks Education Foundation is proud to recognize employees who go above and beyond for our students through the Saks Superstar Award. The foundation recently announced August's recipient, and that's Mrs. Tisha Bowman Ashby, a math teacher here at Homestead who shines with her dedication, compassion, and passion for teaching. Multiple students nominated Mrs. Bowman Ashby, sharing heartfelt words that highlight the incredible impact she's had in their lives. And thus concludes my communications.
All right. Thank you, Dr. St. John. We're getting ready to do the approval of the consent agenda. And I always like to explain what exactly is on the agenda. The items on the consent agenda are the minutes of October 21st, 2025, school board meeting, bills, claims, payrolls, and accounts, and personnel recommendations. Would anyone like to remove any item for a separate discussion? Okay, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? And a second? And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, this is the most exciting part of the agenda, which is the IREDA recognition. And I'll turn that over to Dr. St. John.
Thank you, Mrs. Mopert. It is my honor and privilege to share with you some outstanding student achievements. Annually in Saks, we carve out time to recognize our second and third grade students who have achieved a perfect score on the state of Indiana's IREDA assessment during the previous school year. The IREDA, which stands for Indiana Reading Evaluation and Determination, is a reading assessment developed in accordance with state legislation. It's designed to measure foundational reading skills based on Indiana academic standards through grade three. Students begin participation in IREDA at the second grade now. For some context, during the 24-25 school year, about 87% of the third grade cohort in Indiana demonstrated proficiency. That's not a perfect score, just being proficient. In Saks, our proficiency percentage is just upwards of 93%, so a handful of percentage points above the state average. While Indiana does not publish the percentage of students who achieve a perfect score, we do know it is a rather exclusive club. And we're very proud of these students and families who are now in this exclusive club. So I'm gonna turn it over to our elementary principals, who will start with Aboyt being our first elementary school in alphabetical order. And so I think what we'd like to do is bring these students across and in front of the stage. And then by school, we'd have an opportunity to take some pictures. Each school will then kind of re-stage over here in this corner. We'll get a little bit crowded, but that way, all students in all elementary schools will be recognized. And then after our last elementary school, which would be Whispering Meadows, we will kind of escort everyone, all of our elementary students, out into the vestibule area. And so with that, I think we're ready to start with Ms. Miller and Aboyt.
Thank you so much for coming and bringing your kids. I want to introduce, actually, the people who really make it happen. These are two of our third grade teachers, Mrs. Phillips and Mrs. Klepper.
Thank you. All right, Max Becker. Heather Brock. Maeta Chikava. Reagan Drummond. Naomi Dwyer. Luke Ganton. Samir Khan. Luke. Oliver Keel. Elliot Creaker. Daniel Lambert. Alice Menzey. Evan Morrison. Brennan Petros. Julie Pyle. Liam Riggle. Oliver Rose Andrade. Henry Shuler. Vinay Shinoy. Colin Staus. Actually, I think Staus. Logan Welker. And Lola Og.
That was the fastest I've ever been done. That was really good. There we go.
Great job, guys. Great job.
Good evening. It's so exciting to see so many of you here for such an awesome reason. I'm Megan Skelton, principal at Covington Elementary. Our hardworking teachers who made it happen are standing on the sideline for this. They have shared that they would rather support from there. So I will be announcing our perfect IREDA scores. We have Emery Bayless. Hamena Colorado Sapata. Isabel Heller, who is a second grader, or was a second grader when she took the test. Emma Meehan. And Eloise Reineerson.
Good evening. My name's Jennifer Sprague, and I'm the principal at Deer Ridge Elementary. And I also would like to thank our hardworking staff. Sonia Nixon, Rachel Wild, Danielle Burke, and Lori Shrock, our literacy coach. We have two students who are here to join us tonight. Not all our students were able to attend, so congratulations to Henry Cumcia. And congratulations to Hudson Champ, who is a second grader. Great job. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for coming tonight. This is one of my favorite nights because we get to celebrate our students. I'm Ashley Ransom, principal at Haverhill Elementary. So let me introduce our, we have one amazing staff member with the kiddos, but we also, I'm gonna call them out, have three in the front row. Serena Schrader is our literacy specialist, Mrs. Kelly Stiltner, our school counselor, and then retired teacher, Mrs. Sarah Gagline. We also have with us Mrs. Katie Charters with us tonight. What you might not see tonight, though, is how much work and effort they put in to help our students reach this goal, so it's a celebration for them tonight as well. We have, first with us, Josephine Hanson. Second grader who passed it with a perfect score, Evangelina Herter. Mr. Jacob Lutz. Second grader, passed it with a perfect score, Primo Pasquale. Abel Philpot. Arianna Southers. Savannah Southers. Jackson Torres. And Cooper Winker. Congratulations, guys.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jenny Fidel, principal at Lafayette Meadows. We have a couple teachers with us, but before I name them, I do, and all of the principals, we have kindergarten teachers, first grade teachers, second, third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers, resource teachers, literacy coaches, like, all of them should be up here and we should recognize them because it really takes all of us to help every student that comes through our doors. So I do have Mrs. Foster here tonight, and Mrs. Hoover. And then the students that have perfect IREDA scores from last year are Austin Burnett. Lilian Clag. Madeline Foster. Elliot Miller. Jace Moyer. And our second grader last year, Primrose White.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. My name is Nicole White. It's my pleasure to serve as principal at Whispering Meadows. I also would like to call out the teachers that are here celebrating with us tonight because it certainly is the result of teachers pouring into our boys and girls and the exact mission of why we get to come to school and do what we do every day. So here with us tonight, we have Mrs. Littlejohn, third grade teacher. Ms. Brackeen, second grade teacher. Mrs. Martin, first grade teacher. Mrs. Wybo, our instructional interventionist. Mrs. Underwood, our assistant principal. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I see lots of also familiar faces. So thank you to everyone for pouring into our boys and girls. See, Mrs. Ferrara, fourth grade teacher in the back row. I caught her. All right, with us tonight that we get to celebrate for earning those perfect IREDA scores, we'd like to celebrate and congratulate Chloe Deacon. And Zoe Roberts. Thank you for helping us celebrate these ladies.
And at this time, it's my understanding we'd like to get a full group picture. And so we'll do this out through these doors where I'm pointing, out in the vestibule area. And what I would say is, parents and everyone, you're welcome to stay, but you probably, you probably don't want to do that, and that's quite all right. So, but before you leave, I'd like to just say that, on behalf of all of us, thank you for choosing Saks. We do know that you have lots of choices for your family, and you choose to send your child to us. And we appreciate that. We don't take it for granted, and we love what we do, so thank you. All that said, great job, ladies and gentlemen, and out to vestibules.
Actually, it probably is the insulation. Did you go to Lourdes? Yeah. Right, because it's so funny, because my daughter Jenny and my older son went to Lourdes, and Jenny wound up playing basketball with Rachel King, who, his mother was a mopper. And we always, the mopper, we're moppers. We always get confused. Okay. Yeah, no, but you're, you're, well, I, don't mind it, you're not the first person. Well, it's good. Thank you. Thanks so much. Hi. You're gonna have to help me. Oh, my gosh. Hi. Nice to meet you. How are you? Good. Good to see you. And you're here for, one of the third graders. That's awesome. Yeah, see ya.
Last hand standing, right there.
Hey, Fletch, right there, Fletch.
Oh, yay, Ryan. Fletch knows Ryan. Yay. Oh, that's hilarious.
Made it clear it out.
It did. Okay, well, we're not, we're, actually, we're left with two great guys. No, three great guys. All right. We're gonna go to the third item on the agenda, which is the E-Rate Program Overview and Discussion, Category One, Category Two. It is discussion, and it would be Keith Matson.
I don't know how I'm gonna follow that up. I'm gonna try to make E-Rate sound entertaining. I don't know. So, good evening, President Mopert, members of the board, and Superintendent St. John. I'm gonna first start off by giving a brief summary of what the E-Rate process is. So, established in 1997, the E-Rate process is a federally funded program that helps K-12 school districts and public libraries afford telecommunication and internet access. E-Rate is administered by the Universal Services Administration Company, which is USAC, under the direction of the FCC, so the Federal Communications Commission. There are basically eight, no, excuse me, seven parts to the E-Rate process. I guess eight if you include the purchasing. So there's the Planning and Needs Assessment, which we've already done, and we know what we need. That's number one. Number two is Competitive Bidding. So the schools must post a Form 470. That's the official form name for the process. Number three is Selecting a Service Provider. There's always a 28-day waiting period, and then there's a rubric we have to follow. Number four is Filing the E-Rate Application, which the official term is the Form 471. Step five is that the Universal Services Administration reviews the application and gives approval. In other words, the FCC has to approve it, okay? And then step six is the Funding Commitment Letter, which usually comes, and that's a big usually, usually comes in the late summer. In all the years I've been doing this, there were two years where it was like the following late winter, but they've kind of gotten their act together. They're a little bit more organized. And it's been late summer in the last few years. And then step seven is the Delivery of Service, the Purchasing and the Delivery of Service, and the Invoicing Process. So that's my summary, but I want to make some key points, five key points. There are basically two categories, okay? There's Category One, and in Category One is your broadband and internet services. So think of, you know, how we get Wi-Fi, how we get internet access in the schools. And then there's Category Two. So Category Two is all the other stuff. It's the internal connections, such as access points in the ceiling, such as the cabling, the routers, the switches, and the controllers, all the behind-the-scenes network equipment that runs everything else. And then the third point that I want to make is what's not allowed, not included, not, it doesn't cover. Okay, it doesn't cover end-user devices. It doesn't cover computers. We can't use this process to purchase computers. It doesn't cover phones. It does not cover software. So those are the main categories of what the E-Rate process does not allow, okay? My fourth point that I want to make is Discounts. So discounts range widely from 20% to 90%, and it's all based upon the school district's free and reduced lunch count, okay? Currently, based upon our current free and reduced lunch count, our discount is 50%, which means if my department, if we were to purchase hardware equal to approximately $100,000, our out-of-pocket expenses is only $50,000. That's exactly how it works, okay? And so our current discount is 50%. That sometimes changes year to year. I'm under the impression that will not change in this process. It hasn't changed, apparently, in a little while. My fifth point that I want to make is that funding is available yearly with a new cycle starting in July and then ending in July if the FCC actually makes the decision and approves and, you know, everything is on time. That sometimes does not happen, and they extend everything. So here are my two requests. So I have one for Category One. So Southwest Allen County Schools Technology Department is requesting approval to begin the process of publishing our Category One E-Rate project and the required Form 470, which I had mentioned. For this year, Saks Technology will be publishing a RFP, that's the Request for Proposal, for the district's wide area network, our WAN. So Saks is coming to the end of a three-year agreement with Comcast at 5 gigabytes for the district at a cost of, now, notice I mention this in months, okay? We pay $1,851 per month. If you extrapolate that out, that's a little over $22,000 per year. I say it in months because they bill us in months, whereas a lot of, like, software, they typically bill us by the year. In the RFP, Saks will be considering proposals for In the RFP, Saks will be considering proposals for one year, two years, or three years, for up to 20GB for the district, and we will adhere to the E-Rate process, excuse me, the RFP must be board-approved, which is why we're here tonight, and we must consider at least three competitive bids for the proposal. After the 28-day waiting period, we will consider all valid bids, using that evaluation matrix that I mentioned, and we have to choose a winning bidder. Then we will wait for approval from USAC, which again is usually in the summer, and hope to purchase if approved by USAC and the FCC. So here's our Category Two request, so Southwest Allen County Schools Technology Department is requesting approval to begin the process of publishing our Category Two E-Rate project and the required Form 470. This 470 has really sort of two parts here, it's for upgrading single-mode fiber at Covington Elementary and for replacing the universal power supply, also known as UPSs, those units, which are large, very large, battery backups at Covington Elementary and at Homestead High School. The estimated, this is a rough estimate, estimated replacement cost for the Covington UPS is around $25,000, and the estimated replacement cost of the Homestead UPS is around $30,000, and the estimated cost of the fiber at Covington is around $15,000, so I estimate the cost of both combined at $70,000 for the UPS units and the fiber. So now please note that following the process, that Saks' out-of-pocket cost would be approximately $35,000 through the E-Rate process. These costs, again, are an educated guess, and the cost may be higher or lower depending upon the proposals, but probably not excessively so. This project has been planned for, the funding is already in our technology department budget, and the project must be board-approved, why we're here, and we must consider at least three reasonable vendor bids, using the valuation matrix, and choose a winning bidder. Then, and I've said this before, Saks will wait for approval from USAC, which usually arrives in the summer, and then we will hope to purchase the fiber and the UPS units in the late summer. So, two proposals in one, Category One, Category Two. Are there any questions?
One thing, Keith, it's great to have, and we're so happy to have you on the team, and even being a Dodgers fan, right? One question would be, Mr. Gilpin owns and runs a really successful technology company, and I guess, just as a side thought, just maybe a conversation down the road, just to make sure Mark has a chance, if you'd like, to, you know, work in conjunction with you from time to time on some of these things, because I think he can give a lot of really good insight and expertise, but I think, I think this looks great.
Yep, we would definitely have to follow the E-Rate process, but yeah, yep.
This was well done, in my opinion, so.
Thank you, sir, thank you very much. Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, move on to number four, public meeting on the tentative agreement for the master contract, and this would be discussion, Josh St. John.
Thank you, Mrs. Mopert, pleased to report that Saks Administration and the Southwest Allen County Teachers Association, SACTA have reached a tentative agreement for the master contract. Tonight's discussion item is the second part of a three-part series of public meetings or hearings required by Indiana statute to ratify the contract. The first meeting was a required public hearing before the first meeting of formal collective bargaining, and that was hosted by myself and the exclusive representative of SACTA, Mrs. Barone, back on September 9th. Tonight's the second meeting, a public meeting called the tentative agreement meeting, where the school board has the opportunity to discuss the tentative agreement, which is included in your board packet. The third and final meeting is a public meeting called the ratification meeting, that'll be hosted by the school board, where public comment is allowed. As you know, we have that meeting scheduled for next Tuesday in this room, that's November 11th, at 7:00 a.m. Some additional details, administration and SACTA had multiple informal and formal bargaining sessions during the collective bargaining season to reach this tentative agreement, as you'll see in your board packet, there are limited language changes in the master contract, there were several new legal requirements this year from IRB, and so all Indiana school corporations were navigating that new territory, so to speak. We navigated these changes while keeping the compensation model basically the same, few tweaks, including the recognition of earning a literacy endorsement, all that to say, we're able to agree on $215 per unit, since most teachers will get six units, then most teachers will qualify for a $1,290 raise, others will get an additional unit for earning that literacy endorsement, others may earn units for securing a master's degree, and that's the same as has been in previous years. The bottom salary will be moved from $48,500 to $49,000, top salary moved from $83,000 to $84,000. The bottom and the top are both bargained and agreed upon, so all that to say, depending on a teacher's current salary and the number of units they earned in the 24-25 school year, the range of a teacher's raise falls roughly between 1.5 and 2.5%, the top end receiving the lower percentage because their salary is higher, that numerator is larger. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? No, thank you for getting that done, and thank you, Mr. Henley, I know you and Mrs. Barone worked hard, and, yeah.
Yeah, super pleased, it was a tough, tough season, a lot of challenges, I mean, we've been talking about, of course, enrollment and the new money coming from the state, but just on a related note, I could not be more pleased with the collaborative relationship that the administration has with SACTA, I hope that is, that feeling is reciprocated, but just, we've got an amazing group of teachers, and the leadership in SACTA is always, puts kids first, and advocates for their teachers well, and collaborates with us very well, so it was, it was a successful experience. This is Josh St. John speaking.
Oh, thank you, thank you. All right, we will, any other discussion, anybody has a question? Okay, we're gonna move on to number five on the agenda, recommendation for the approval of the 2027-28 district calendar, it's an action item, and Dr. St. John.
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Mopert, bringing forward a recommendation for approval of the district calendar for the 27-28 school year, it's been posted on the website for the required amount of time prior to adoption, as I had shared with you, discussed the proposed calendar with our teachers association, considered all the parameters set forth in our policy, and it's a calendar that is very similar to the calendar we've been following in recent years, and that we'll follow next year as well.
All right, do I have a motion? Do I have a second? And is there any more discussion about this? I think we've all looked at it, all right, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, we'll move on to number six, recommendation of approval to advertise for Whispering Meadows roofing projects, that is also an action item, and that would be, Mrs. Libby.
Members of the board, in fall of '24, we took out a general obligation bond that included three roof replacement projects funded through that bond, two of which were at Homestead High School, one was at Haverhill, and those were both completed over the summer of '25. The next on the docket was for Whispering Meadows Elementary to be done in summer of '26, and so at that time, Martin Riley was engaged to perform roofing, roof testing, design, and bidding services. During their assessment, core drillings and infrared thermal scans were conducted in this past June, results indicated that the existing insulation is in good condition, only a few localized areas showed moisture, and because of this, we will not be doing a full tear-off like we thought we were going to in the budget phase. So, this would go out to bid this, the 7th, and if, upon your approval, we would have bid openings on December 2nd, with the anticipated bid to be awarded at the next board meeting, December 16th.
Thank you, Mrs. Libby, I know you've put a lot of time in all of these items that you've been doing throughout the year, do I have a motion? Do I have a second? And is there any discussion?
Just a question, do we have a revised budget on this one?
We have not revised the budget within the '24 general obligation bond, we do have other land purchases that the excess funds could go towards.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know if it was gonna, lowered budget.
We haven't adjusted the budget yet, yeah.
Anybody else? All of us in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay. Number seven, the recommendation of the approval of design criterion developer for K-8 renovations, it's an action item, it's Mrs. Libby also.
During our October 8th meeting, we requested for, to advertise for an RFP for design criterion developer, these are for our K-8 building upgrades, that we work through a design-build process, and under Indiana code, we are required to hire a design criterion developer. Proposals were due on October 22nd, after review and compliance, we'd like to recommend Lancer BV, Lancer Architecture, to serve as the design criterion developer. Lancer has extensive experience with educational facility design, strong understanding of the design process, in fact, when Indiana code first allowed this to be in schools, Lancer was on one of the first design-build projects, they have a collaborative history with Indiana schools, their proposed fixed fee is $50,000, which includes all required services under the RFP. We'd like to recommend, to move forward with Lancer.
Okay, do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Do we have any discussion?
Just a question, how many bids do we get on this one?
We received one bid.
All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Nay? All right, is there any further public comment? Any board comment?
I got something.
Sure.
Well, after the meeting last, a couple weeks ago, I spoke with Mike Martin, and I probably should have known this, but we have not, he said canceled one school route this year, bus route, and, I didn't know that, and, yeah, we went from, we went from just not a good situation to handle it, so I just wanted to make a shout-out to Mike and his team, good job, I'm so happy to do that.
Thank you for saying that, that's awesome.
I was gonna say that in front of the group, but I didn't find the right time to jump in.
Oh, just blurt it out. That's great, thank you, Brian, that's awesome. All right, and with that.